Good morning and welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting, January 25th. It is 7:30 a.m. on a rainy Monday, and I'm really happy to see all of you join this morning. Wanted to take a brief minute as we start our agenda to remember we've lost several folks that have been prominent in our community for many, many years over the last week. And I just would like to make mention of Mr. Lad Barnes, who was family and instrumental in the comporium network, which used to be for us, the old town of Fort Mill phone company, and just really brought a lot to our community, a great gentleman, sorry at his passing. Ms. Sandra Bonds, wife of Joe Bonds, a previous school superintendent passed, and just a lovely, lovely lady. And then most recently, unfortunately, we've lost Billy Baron. Billy was a legend. He truly, in addition to being our first Ranger at the Greenway, Billy was very involved and interested in the town and in its progress. His stories were incredible to listen to. He always had good thoughts and kindness. Let's just all keep these families in our prayers as we continue to move forward.
And also Henry Bryant and Mr. Banks.
Yes, and I think we mentioned Henry in our last meeting, maybe not, but thank you for keeping up with that. Henry Bryant was a long-term citizen and fantastic volunteer in our community and just will be terribly missed. And then, of course, Bill Banks. There's not enough time to sit here and talk about the contributions that Bill Banks offered to our community because we would be here for days. His son Mac Banks has been a reporter here and a mainstay in our community. And, you know, Mr. Banks was at Fort Mill High when I was. So I'm certain that I could sit here and mention every community member that's passed and let us just give condolences to all those that have. So with that, we will quickly say our pledge of allegiance, and I'll do the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this morning and for your care during these times. The difficulties of our nation seem to be compounded daily. We couldn't make our decisions and come together without your care and your guiding hand. Please help us to do the business of our town in a fair, balanced, and justified way. We thank you for all things. Amen. All right, council members, you've had the meeting minutes from January the 11th, 2021. Do we have any changes, additions, or deletions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move for approval.
Okay, do I have a second? And a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All right, we've got approval of the minutes. Bless you, Jamie. Public comment.
Choking on my coffee.
It's okay. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Davy, I know you're at Town Hall, do we have anyone signed in to make a comment?
Mayor, we have no one signed in today.
All right, then we'll move directly into presentations. Presentation number one will be Jakana Hester, bringing us up to speed on the 2021 South Carolina Strawberry Festival. Thank you for joining us, Jakana.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last year, due to the pandemic, we had to transition our annual festival to an all-virtual celebration. And during that week, we featured contests, strawberry queens, games, business, and vendor spotlights, and a showcase of all of our sponsors and on our social media and our town website. This year, we are presenting our plans for a scaled-down version of our in-person week of events from April 23rd through May 1st. With COVID continuing to be an issue, we can't host the usual festival in the park, but hope to instead provide a slate of fun, family-friendly events spread out around town where we can socially distance and follow COVID-19 guidelines. And the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Committee, we've developed ideas for small-scale events, and these will be structured to keep safety as a priority while providing engaging events and promoting community pride and keeping the spirit of the festival alive. And as I said, it would run from Friday, April the 23rd to Saturday, May 1st. And we want to kick off our week on Friday, April 23rd with the 2021 South Carolina Strawberry Festival pageant, adding the Little Miss Division this year for the Tiny and Little Miss Strawberry Shortcake, and then the Miss Strawberry Princess and the Miss Strawberry Festival Junior Team. And we feel like we can keep this and our Teen Miss and Misses pageant safe by following COVID-19 guidelines, by allowing contestants only two guests each, socially-distanced seating in the auditorium, and practices, meetings, any events that the contestants have to do following the COVID-19 guidelines and requiring them to wear masks and social distance. We'll have COVID-19 signage reminders throughout the event, and we'll either pre-record or livestream the event to allow for more viewing from the public. And any food will be distributed by a caterer, of course, following DHEC and COVID guidelines. And then the Teen Miss and Misses, we would hold that on Saturday, April 24th, in the evening. And then on Saturday morning, April 24th, the Fort Mill Economic Partners would like to host their first annual Strawberry Sprint and Straw 5K. And they are developing more safety plan than what I have here, but they are looking at adding racers are required to wear masks at all times except while running the race. There will be no day-of registration. Packet pickup will occur prior to race day. No spectators will be allowed to avoid overcrowding. Hand-washing stations and portable restroom facilities will be placed together. Hand sanitizer available throughout the event. And all participants and volunteers will sign a COVID waiver as part of their event or program registration. And any vendors at the event will be spread out so that everyone can social distance. Start and finish locations will be at different areas when possible to prevent congregating. And then winners will be able to pick up their medals on race day once results are final, but there will be no award ceremony to avoid large gatherings. They're looking at doing that off-site. And there will be no water stations or snacks available for the runners. They're going to ask runners to bring their own for that. And then for their staff and volunteers, they will require them to wear masks at all times. And any staff or volunteers will also be required to wear gloves if handling any items related to the race, such as packet pickup, checking temperatures, all of that stuff. And then all the staff and volunteers will also have their temperature checked upon arrival. And anyone, of course, that has 100.4 degree or higher temperature will be asked to go home. And they would like to host that. The race start is at 9:00 a.m. on that day, and it will be, everything will be over by noon. And then on Sunday, April the 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., we normally have our pancake practice by the Nation Ford High School Athletic Boosters. We either have it at Nation Ford or another location. But this year, just for COVID reasons and to keep people safe, Ann Springs closed Greenway, the Gateway Canteen has agreed to partner with us and host this event for us because they have an ability to have a ticketed system there that will, you know, where we can limit the number of entries per hour. And they also have the beautiful Don Far porch out there that allows for beautiful outdoor seating plus the green space. So it's a great location to hold the practice this year for the COVID-19 guidelines. And they are going to be serving up scrambled eggs, house-made bacon, and pancakes topped with fresh spring's farm strawberry topping. And that will be 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And of course, you know, they have their on-site caterer there following all COVID-19 guidelines and DHEC guidelines. So that will be a wonderful event. And then on Sunday afternoon, we would like to move to Walter Elijah Park from 12:00 to 4:00 and host the Strawberry Blossom Car Show and Food Trucks. And our safety plan for this is we'll place the cars in the park, allowing enough space for social distancing while viewing. We'll cap the number of cars to ensure we can space them to allow for viewing room. And then we'll limit the number of food trucks and place them with adequate distance so people will be socially distanced while they are in line. And of course, our food trucks follow DHEC and COVID guidelines. We'll have signage reminders throughout the event about the guidelines. And then our event promotion will include the expected COVID guidelines to follow while you are attending the event. And then on Monday, April the 26th, we are hosting an online photo contest because we know people have taken many, many photos throughout the years of the South Carolina Strawberry Festival, and we're just going to ask everyone to submit their photos. And then we're going to have an online contest on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival Facebook and allow the public to vote on those for first, second, and third place. And then on Tuesday, April the 27th, we would like to have the golf tournament at Springfield Golf Club. They have agreed to come on board again for that this year with an 8:00 a.m. welcome reception, 9:30 a.m. shotgun start, and registrations $90 and includes a tournament gift, breakfast and lunch, and four drink tickets per player. And they will have sponsorships like they normally do for the event and for the holes. And our people that provide the breakfast and lunch, Bojangles and Subway, of course, everything is prepackaged by them and will be handed out following, you know, safety guidelines. And then our drinks will be handed out by Springfield Golf Club. And our sponsors will not be allowed to hand those out this year. For COVID guidelines, we have to let the golf club hand those out. And the COVID-19 safety plan, we will have two golfers per cart, and that is what other tournaments are allowing right now during COVID. We'll have a cap of 132 golfers. We'll have signage reminders throughout the event. Masks are required inside the golf club and when you cannot, social distance. And then masks will also be required during check-in and registration. And that's all of that. And then on Wednesday, April the 28th, we would like to spotlight our local Fort Mill businesses. Each year, our restaurants and merchants always have strawberry products, and we want to feature those products throughout the day on our social media and our website, bringing more attention to them and what they have to offer. And we'll probably pre-record some of this too to share on this day. And then on Thursday, April the 29th, we would like to have our second annual Strawberry Idol Contest. This year, unfortunately, our winners from last year cannot, we don't have a formal strawberry festival for them to be able to show their talents. But we are hoping to show them on Facebook, and then we'll announce our winners of this year's following their performance on Facebook. So that contest submissions will be taken until Monday, April the 26th at 5:00. And then on Thursday, April 29th at 7:00 o'clock, we will let our 2020 winners sing a song, and then we'll announce the winner. And then Friday, April the 30th, we would like to have Strawberry Flickin' Food. It's a drive-in movie at a local venue, and we'll have a few food trucks there. And our safety plan for this is we'll place the vehicles, allowing enough space for social distancing between them. We will cap the number of cars once we determine the venue so that we can space them adequately. The movie will be turned into a radio frequency for listening. The food trucks will be placed with adequate distance. And of course, the food trucks will follow DHEC and COVID guidelines. We'll have signage reminders throughout that event. And the event promotion will include expected COVID guidelines to follow while attending. And then on Saturday, May 1st, since this is our normal, large festival day, the Greenway again has graciously offered to host this event for us and have a strawberry artisan market, again, because they have the ticketed system there and they can control the numbers of people. From 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., it will be on the Gateway Canteen loan. And this market will feature handmade and homemade items only. At the Strawberry Festival, we're usually able to have business vendors and other vendors, but this is just going to be a true artisan market with handmade and homemade items. And of course, it's outdoor for social distancing. The registration of vendors will be done through the Ann Springs Close Greenway. They always have COVID signage reminders at the events. Masks required in areas where social distancing is not possible. And they also said that in addition to showcasing offerings from local farms, vendor registration would begin in late January, and then tickets for the event will be available beginning April 1st. And it will be free for Greenway members, but then non-members will pay the day-use fee of $6 per adult or $4 per child. And then they have a $5 parking fee, which they require for all their events out there to help maintain the property. And then another event on Saturday, May 1st, we would like to have is the Fort Mill History Museum would like to host a strawberry scavenger hunt around town. They would develop a plan, and we would place strawberry little signs at the designated areas. And then families or individuals, they will go around town and do the scavenger hunt, and prizes will be awarded for the people that complete this. And of course, the museum, you know, they will require people to pre-register and follow COVID guidelines while they're going around town and navigating the hunt. And then we'll post winners for that on our town and Strawberry Festival social media. And then on Saturday, May 1st, we're working with a local vet that would like to host this. We would ask all of our dog parents to dress their fuchus up in strawberry attire, and they will bring them to a local vet parking lot to be judged. And then we'll pick first, second, and third place for that, and we'll post all those cute little pictures on town and Strawberry Festival social media. And then the COVID-19 safety plan, of course, it'll be outdoors. We'll have COVID signage reminders at the event. We will promote the COVID guidelines on our promotions. And then, of course, mask required if social distancing is not possible. And then throughout the week, starting on Friday, April 23rd through Saturday, May 1st, we're having a strawberry decorating contest, and we are asking our town to decorate for the South Carolina Strawberry Festival. And this is for residents and businesses. And for residents, we would like to ask them to decorate their mailbox or a door wreath strawberry-themed. And then they would email their pictures to us for a chance to win prizes. And then for the businesses, we're asking them to decorate their window display or another location inside their business and then email their photos to us as well for a chance to win prizes and just to have a strawberry-themed week throughout our town. And then during the week, there's a local cooking school that would like to offer strawberry cooking. So we are turning this into a contest where we will ask participants to send us their best and worst cooking experiences, and we will select winners. There will be 28 total, 14 for each class. And we will pick the winners of that, and they will get to either go to the Simple Sunday Skills Cooking Class and then, or the Farm-to-Table Strawberry Patch Picks Cooking Class. And those would be held on Sunday and Tuesday. And their menus look fabulous. At the school, they require, it's kind of like a restaurant, you have to wear your mask the entire time. They're all preparing, and they are only allowed to wear a mask once they're seated for dinner. So they're following all DHEC and COVID guidelines during their classes as we speak, and we'll continue to do so for these events. And then throughout the week, we would like to have strawberry tate and mix in a local woodwork shop. Would like to work with us on this. And they will make strawberry-themed woodwork pieces. And we will have kids' families register to pick these up, and they will take them home and make them. And then we'll ask them to send us their pictures, and we will post all their pictures of their strawberry tate and mix online and on our website. And of course, all of our information, if we can move forward with everything, we will post all the information on our strawberry website, scstrawberryfestival.com. You can follow the town and the South Carolina Strawberry Festival on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. And also, on our last sheet here, the South Carolina Strawberry Festival Committee, I just wanted to share all the people that have been working to try to bring us a COVID-friendly festival to do the best that we can during this time and just to make it as fun and engaging as we can for our community while being as safe as possible. And I just think all these people's hard work from what they've done so far.
That was one of the best presentations I've ever seen for the town of Fort Mill. And what an amazing group of activities for our town. I'm blown away. It's fabulous. I think it might be my favorite strawberry festival yet.
Thank you. Our committee's been working hard on just coming up with ideas.
It's just really good, Jakana. Fantastic job. Just a wonderful job. Wow.
I agree. I think while COVID may be the cause, I think the effect has been that it has got much more of a hometown feel to it and less commercialization, which is what it had grown into. It had gotten bigger than all of us. So I love how much community you've brought back into this. So great job, and as Mayor said, fantastic job on the presentation. Very crisp and clean and informative.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Lisa.
I was just going to say, I do have a couple of questions, but I want you to bask in the excitement because you did a great job on this, and the committee's done a great job pulling it together. I do have a little bit of concern on the artisan market event and the cost for non-members to be able to get into that event. And then my guess is we're selling stuff too. So with the cost of having to pay to get into the Greenway and the parking fees and then hoping people are going to participate and purchase some of the goods, it seems like it could get kind of expensive. So I'm not sure if there's something we can do to maybe do a day pass that's a little bit less expensive or work with the Greenway. I commend you guys on the great partnership we now have with them and how that's going. But that does seem a little bit pricey.
I think it is in alignment, Lisa, with the events that they have been able to successfully and safely host to date. They've had Christmas-type events for local artisans that have been very successful. And again, we want to limit the number of folks that, you know, can attend, not by cost, mind you, but, you know, we need to follow as closely as possible their guidelines to ensure that as we are partnering and are allowed to use their property as including in our strawberry festival, you know, certainly we can look into ways for folks that might not be able to afford the cost. But, you know, $5 a car and you can have six, eight people in each car is not terrible. $6 entry fee is the normal fee. So I think certainly understand where those costs are coming from.
So maybe I misunderstood then, Jakana. So assume a family of four going that is not a member. What would the total cost for the four of them be?
Six, four for 24 plus five.
Right. Okay.
It's pretty simple.
About 30 bucks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Family of four would be, yeah, 29 bucks.
Okay. And then my other question is just how this impacts our budget. So I know we'll have an updated budget meeting in March, but strawberry festival has been a pretty extensive budget item for us and something we keep an eye on. I know we ended up not spending much last year, and this certainly seems to be much more in our favor and saving a little bit of money on the budget side of things. So just wondering when you think we'll have an updated budget request?
Yeah, we have come up with some numbers. We think that it will cost to run this festival as well as we possibly can. And we have reached out to some sponsors that want to come on board with us this year. And so we're not looking at spending a lot, but we'll have more definite numbers in the next couple of weeks as we hear from more sponsors.
And I feel certain we'll know what we need to know before our March revisitation of our budget. So thank you, Jakana. It's just been, you hit it out of the park. I'm very pleased. The whole committee deserves kudos for coming up with inventive and creative ways to involve more. I'm just so pleased, very pleased.
Well, thank you.
I just had a quick question with the outdoor events. Are they going to be rain or shine? Are we going to have alternative days?
We're going to have to discuss that more on some of these events to determine. Obviously, yeah, for the time-wise there, some events will not be rain or shine, like the car show. We know the car show participants, they're not going to want to bring their beautiful cars out on a rainy day, and that's probably an event we would have to cancel if it was raining. But we'll just have to talk about those things a little more and determine what events we actually can reschedule. and determine what events we actually can reschedule if we needed to or if they will be rain or shine.
And then I didn't see, we're encouraging people to send photos and everything like that. I didn't see if we're going to send them to a website or we send them to our, let them just push it up onto our site, onto our Facebook page? How, how are we going to handle all that information coming in?
Yeah, for the online photo contest, they will email their, their photos to me. And then we will create an album on our South Carolina Strawberry Festival page for, for the participants and all the public to go there. Kind of like we did the scarecrow crawl where we put all the photos into one album and people will go there to vote on their favorites.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Again, Jakana, I think the care that you've put into this is evident.
Yeah, really good.
Thank you.
Make pardon, Chris.
I just said it was really good. It was really awesome presentation.
Fantastic. I'm looking forward to it. All right. Thank you so much, Jakana.
Thank you.
We will now move into old business items. Old business item number one, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Four, Article One, Section 4-4. So as to rename the section to swine, chickens, and other fowl, and to update the regulations relating to the keeping of swine in the Town of Fort Mill. Chris Pettit is our expert on this particular item. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, I accept old business item number one.
Thank you. And I'll second, thank you, Lisa. I'll second. Okay, good. Chris, anything changed since the last vote?
Good morning, Mayor. No, no changes since first reading.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions in regards to this topic?
Have we received any kind of outside comments or concerns after the initial presentation?
I don't believe we've received anything really for or against the action at first reading from the public.
Perfect.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Thank you. There are no new business items, so we will move into the information discussion portion of our agenda. We have a capital projects update by Davy. Davy, thank you for doing this for us this morning.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. This is just going to be a very brief update. I provided a little more detailed update back in our early, our first January meeting. We've had some movement over the last couple of weeks for the Walter Wildlife Park Upgrade Project. There's been, I have no report for the amphitheater site itself. The restrooms themselves are, again, they're, they're close to being completed. I noticed this week that concrete walkways and sidewalks have been added to those, both of those sites. So it's come along really well. For our parking lots, we have three parking lots, A, B, and C. Last meeting I provided, parking lot A, we were studying a geotech report. I'm happy to say that that pot which is located along Ardrick Street has begun and underway right now being constructed. So we are very excited about that and anticipate it being completed or at least worked on over the next several weeks. I do not have an updated date of completion yet. I'll provide that in the near future. If you've been by the park this week, you'll notice that the adult swings have changed a little since my last report. Brick columns have been added to all four posts and the swings have been hung themselves. So we are asking the public not use those at this, at this time. We've got yellow cones at each one. We're allowing the brick mortars set up. And there's, there's still some funnel prep work that needs to be done before we can open the swings to the public. But I would anticipate, weather permitting, that that happened in the next few days or so. That's, that's the only updates I have for the Walter Wildlife Park. Again, the overall project itself is still projected to be completed by August of 2021. So things are still moving forward. They had a few good days without rain. But as you can see today, we're back into having some inclement weather that may affect some of the time. I have some news on the Banks Athletic Park. Staff was able to advertise our bid for the construction of the Banks Athletic Park. That took place on January the 18th. We anticipate having the bid document opening, public bid opening on February the 18th. Staff will then take those bids along with the engineering firm. And we will vet them and then plan to bring that, bring that information to council in our March timeframe for your approval on the beginning of the construction. The tennis courts at the YMCA, the site survey, again, was completed by ESP Associates. Staff is, has set up meetings with them this week to get more detailed information for the site. I anticipate bringing information back to you in the next couple of weeks. For our water and sewer projects, we were, last report, we were just days away from completing the water tank. I can happily say it is now complete. Landscaping has been done. So that project is, is over. And the sewer lift stations that were provided or partially provided through the Rural Infrastructure Authority grant, they are still on schedule and on budget. And I have no more, no further updates on the wastewater treatment plant, but it is still projected completion date in the first quarter of 2022. With that, I'll, that concludes my report and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Davy, Davy, this is Chris Moody. Where do we stand on the water meter project? Is that completed? I know getting COVID kind of pulled things up at one point.
Yes, that's a good question. All of the three-quarter inch meters have been installed throughout town. So we, we do have, we're still working on a very small number of meters that whenever the installers came up, ran into, outside of the normal issues, whether the lines didn't quite match up or there's, the box was, was underground. A limited few of those, but most every one in town has already been installed. It's operating. We're now working and continuing to update our overall infrastructure to, to acquire the readings, but it has been working just fine. COVID did slow that down for a time, a period of time, but it is, that portion of the project is now completed. We'll also be working on changing out the one-inch meters, which is a much smaller group of meters. But we anticipate having that in the, in the 2021 time period. Okay, thank you.
That completes your capital projects overview?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. Excellent job. Excellent. We will, any further questions? Information discussion item number two, the Farmer's Market 2020 recap and the plans for 2021. Jakana, thank you again.
You're welcome. So we are going to do a recap of 2020 and explain our plans for the 2021 market. So I wanted to start out with our summer market. We hold our grand opening on Saturday, July 11th. We had six vendors at our first market that featured handmade jewelry, elderberry syrup, baked goods, handmade soaps and lotions, and handcrafted syrups. We had over 400 in attendance throughout the morning that day. Kona Ice gave out over 170 free snow cones. And the vendors were very pleased with the attendance and the sales. Over the summer, we added more types of vendors, including meat, spices, and more handmade items. And of the, of course, favorite coffee. And then we ended the summer market with 17 vendors. And for the market, the town provided vendors with tents. The tents were set up before arrival and removed after the market by our Town of Fort Mill Public Works Department and Fire Department. The town did not charge for four vendor spaces at the market. And we did not charge for the temporary business license that we gave our vendors. We do require each vendor to carry general liability insurance in addition to any insurance required for their products. And the vendors are responsible themselves for registering and paying taxes to the state of South Carolina and following all guidelines required by the state for their products. And for our summer market, July 11th through September the 5th, the vendor sales totaled more than $28,000. So it was very successful for our vendors. And we only had to cancel one market due to extreme weather. And of course, I love to give shout outs to our Public Works Department, all the fire departments that are Public Works and Fire Department. They were just so great in helping set up and remove those tents all summer. We continue to receive positive comments from vendors and patrons throughout the season. And we just appreciate all of our vendors so much who took the time out to come out and bring their products to our community. And then we thank our community and patrons for all their support for that market because they did truly come out and make it successful. And we thank them for bringing all their cute little fur babies out to the market. We love them every week. And then we're going to move to the fall market. This market was held from September the 12th through November the 21st. Due to the success of the summer market, we decided to continue it into the fall. And our vendors were very excited to have the opportunity to continue to sell because they appreciated our community continuing to support it so well. And at this market, we started out with 15 vendors. And we ranged from that amount up to 23 during the season. And we continued to add a variety of vendors, including more meat, produce, handmade items, coffee, spices, popsicles, baked goods, woodwork, and then the handcrafted syrups and beverages, and even more items than that. And then we added a Town of Fort Mill tent to the market where we held contests and shared event information. And it was really great to have that designated area for the town. And it allowed our patrons to, to ask questions if they needed to or they liked having a face of the town out there. The fall market, it coincided very well with our scarecrow crawl and our hay maze that we had in Veterans Park. That brought a lot of traffic through on Saturday mornings as well in addition to our normal patrons. And then in this market, we continued to provide vendors with tents. We didn't charge for the spaces. All the requirements remain the same throughout this market. And our vendor sales for the fall market totaled more than $50,000. So, and no markets were canceled due to the weather. So again, you know, our vendors were very pleased with the market and loved all the community support. And our community continued to give us positive comments about it and, and thank the town so much for, for bringing it to our community. And of course, Public Works and our Fire Department continued to set up tents and take down tents. And, and we, we just appreciate them for doing that so much. And of course, we thank Town Council for supporting this and bringing this to our community. And I know they have greatly appreciated it. And we will move on to our 2021 plans. So we will have one market this year. And it's going to run beginning Saturday, May 8th, and end on Saturday, October the 31st. And the reason we shortened it up a little bit because the last three weeks, we kind of saw numbers go down. And we feel like this just gives a good timeline for the most vibrant season. And we're going to keep the same time this year throughout the season. Last year, we changed it just because of the time change. In early November, it was getting darker, you know, longer in, in the mornings. And so we were trying to help our vendors not be putting everything up in the dark. But our time will be 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. the entire season. And we will begin taking applications on Monday, February the 1st, 2021. And you will be able to find the applications for it and also the Farmer's Market policy on our town website, fortmillsc.gov, beginning February the 1st. Or people can email me for more information or the application at jhester@fortmillsc.gov. And we are seeking applications for meats, produce, eggs, honey, local farm products, other agricultural items, handmade and handcrafted items. And we will accept a limited number of businesses and other products. And last year, we even had a gentleman, he reached out to us that wanted to sponsor the market. And we appreciated that so much. And then he set up a tent out there throughout the summer. And so if anyone is interested in, in being a sponsor, we welcome that as well. And then the, on the next slide, it's just overview of the Farmer's Market application. And then as well as the policy is featured on our town website. And then new for the 2021 Farmer's Market season, we would like to charge $5 for one space per Saturday. And this fee will be collected at the end of each market day. This fee will help offset some costs of providing the market, such as porta johns, hand washing stations, and signage. And we would like to ask our vendors to supply their own tents this year. This will help the town not incur new tent cost and tent repair cost. Because we did run into that a lot, even though we bought quality tents, all of that up, you know, putting up and taking down. It really wreaked havoc on, on the tents that we have. So, and the market will be a total of 26 weeks again, from May 8th through October 31st. And then the time change of 8:30 to 12:30 for the entire season. Those are the new items for the market. And then, of course, our COVID-19 safety plan. We followed all the guidelines in 2020 and we will certainly continue to follow them in 2021. Our vendors are required to sign the COVID-19 guidelines, ensuring that they follow all the safety requirements. And then we always have signage throughout the market to remind everyone of the requirements. We have hand washing station out there. And as an outdoor event, some masks are not required except when unable to social distance. But many of our vendors and patrons, we still wore them. And I'm sure they will continue to do that as an added safety measure. But we look forward to the 2021 season and just another successful year of the Farmer's Market. And again, we just thank Town Council for bringing it to our community.
I think it has been an absolute success from beginning to end. I've heard nothing but positive comments from it. The location has worked. The tents look pretty every Saturday morning when you drive through and see the tents. You know, I'll certainly give kudos again, Jakana, to the great planning and effort that you've made. I know Chris Ardelli helps a good bit with making sure we get things done. So hats off to staff, Public Works, Fire Department. You know, we continue to keep things moving. And I'm so proud of the, the interesting formats that we're able to reach out to our community during. that we're able to reach out to our community during these last, last year and during the pandemic. I, I would like to challenge council and staff to look forward once again to finding a way to do a, a more permanent facility for a farmer's market. I think this past year is an excellent example of the interest. When you consider that we've had a pandemic and we're working on social distancing to have the success that this particular market has brought forward. I'd like for us to take a long look at that. I know we have huge list of capital projects. But I do think this one has given us a, a good insight as to usage and the benefit to the community. So that's just for future thinking. Any questions or further comments for Jacana? Again, fantastic work. We appreciate you so much.
Thank y'all. We appreciate all the teamwork from the town and we appreciate town council for all you did.
We're, we're just here to serve you, hon. All right. With that, that ends our information and discussion section. I would like to hit the highlights real quickly. I have sent to each council member an update from our Pennies project that occurred in our RFAT session last Friday. Just to hit the highlights so that if there's anyone from the public listening in. Again, this is a regional transportation group. Our agenda packet for this past Friday was 143 pages long. Many of those pages are pullout to exceed a legal sized paper. So it is a tremendous effort monthly to get information on transportation issues throughout the region. That region includes our border state of North Carolina. We do look at projects on Highway 49, on I-77, on 21. So just again, if you ever would like to tap into it, it does allow the public to call in and listen or view. But it is an extensive and expansive effort. So you might not find as many Fort Mill projects one time as you will the next. Patrick Hamilton is the gentleman that oversees our Pennies for Progress. He does a fantastic job. We had discussions in regards to a corridor study on Highway 49. I know that's not in Fort Mill, but if you use that to access the Lake Wile area, you know, that you can note the challenges to traffic congestion on 49 at certain times of the day. It's also an alternate route for folks that work in Charlotte. And if there's a problem on I-77, they have a tendency to jump on that and come down 160. The work at Gold Hill and I-77 on the overpass is coming along well. We have experienced weather related delays and we're hoping to see completion of that project late this year. Work on the intersection, this is a big hurrah. Work on the intersection at the Southern Bypass and Sprat Street near Riverview Elementary will be out for bids in February. It will include the movement of a town of Fort Mill water line. The total project will take about 12 to 15 months, the way they have it planned. They anticipate minimal traffic interruptions. And that's one of the busier intersections in our community during work times. The traffic does get backed up on the bypass all the way up to the bridge at U.S. Foods. This particular design hopefully will minimize that congestion and make it a more free flowing intersection rather than a stopped intersection. So looking forward to seeing the relief that hopefully this project will provide. Just, I'm just trying to think, there was one other thing. Revenues for Pennies for Progress were down 4.2% in February, March and April. But they did rebound enough during the summer that very positively, we do not see any change in the funding for the projects that are currently planned and underway for Pennies. Pennies is a unique program. I think that we've had a lot of discussions about it in, in our community over the years. But sitting in RFATs and listening to other Department of Transportation projects, we're, we're just very blessed to have that program to aid in getting some of the road situations addressed. I'd like to remind everyone that these plans at RFATs and for roadway systems are typically 30 years out. It takes a tremendous effort, amount of money to get projects underway. As much as when we see a problem, we'd like to see it addressed immediately. Sometimes we're going to see a 10-year lapse before we can get to it, as is evidenced by the Clayburn Street resurfacing and the additional lane to turn on white. That project has been delayed a couple of times due to a delivery of a mast arm, a light for the intersection and then with the rain for completing it. We were scheduled to complete it for the end of 2020. You can certainly see that they're moving on it, but it's not complete as of yet. So work will continue and hopefully that'll finish sometime soon. We do have a public information portion on the front end of that meeting. There was a comment that was brought to the RFATs group. It was a comment from a, a collection of citizens that live off of White's Road that are eager to find someone that can put a sidewalk access on White's Road from two developments up to the new middle school that is being constructed behind Catawba Ridge. That's about a third of a mile of roadway. Not all of it is in the town. And discussions are ongoing between the school district and the town and the county for the best ways for us to approach providing a safe sidewalk for that, that stretch of property. I think it's, there was a similar project in Indianland along River Road last year. So we might be able to use that project as a good template for how we go about doing this. One of the avenues we have would be to apply for a grant for the Transportation Alternative Program. At times they give out grants that we have to match to help pay for such a project. But certainly, you know, health and safety are at the top of our, our goal list. And we do want to be good partners. So we are working with everyone to see what's possible. And Penelope has spearheaded an effort with RFATs and some of the other discussions. So just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. We're moving along. And that's the end of my update on RFATs. Does anyone else have anything good for the whole?
Just a quick question about, I haven't had a chance to look at the package that you sent us. Did they bring up anything about now that they've started moving? I'm sorry. Now that they've started moving dirt around over there where the hospital is going to be? Did they talk about 21 or the intersection there at 21 and 160?
No, the 21 and 160 intersection will be a part of both the hospital construction, you know, for what they're required to do for egress into their property. And it will be a part of the widening of 21. That project is, is moving along at a pace that even I'm a little surprised it's going quicker. I don't anticipate that starting before the 160 and 77 interchange. I do think that once I-77 and Gold Hill is complete, the next really big project will certainly be the 160-77, which will see some expansion down towards 21. And hopefully that will help relieve it. But the widening of 21 is coming and that project will be in phases. But it will eventually be a widening of 21, which I think it's called bypass, 21 bypass, from the Catawba River Bridge all the way up to Carowinds. And that will help us with traffic movement throughout town and those folks that are peeling off of I-77. So it's moving along again. It, it's not an area that you want to get uber excited because it, it's just so long term. However, I'm, I'm pleased with the management. I'd like to compliment the Pennies staff and the RFATs group. They just completed the upgrade of 160 West from TK out towards 49. They came in $1 million under budget. So that money will be applied to the projects that are currently on our list. And you know, anything that has to happen does. So I'm pretty impressed with, with how well things are going right now.
And that, and that was part of my concern. I knew that we were still working on the bypass, not the bypass, on the 160 Bridge. And then all of a sudden they start tearing up 21 at the same time. That would be a nightmare. But they're moving at right next speed over there at the hospital. I mean, I, every time I drive by there, they've, more and more is being done. It's like, man, they, they're not joking over there anymore.
And I would like to take the opportunity, as you mentioned, the hospital. They have begun preliminary grading of that site. It's being noted and we've gotten questions about it. I would like to take a moment to thank Mark Nasaki, the president, CEO of Piedmont, Wes Klimmer, one of our legislative folks, and Mayor John Geddes and of Rock Hill, and Christie Spears of the school board. All of us are involved. They've carried a huge amount of the weight in getting the COVID vaccination clinic open at the old Rock Hill Mall. And my hat's off to the effort that has gone into that to try and get those vaccines out into our community at a quicker rate. We're now up against a situation where we can only give them out as long as we have doses. You can sign up, anyone can sign up by getting on the Piedmont website and taking directions. I believe we've posted the same information on our website. It is an effort for the York County folks and goodness to pull that together in record time. I believe they had 500 additional doses they were able to secure. So the more effective we are, certainly we're hoping to get more doses. So we'll be asking each of you to help with the effort in addressing the state to get those doses in the hands of people that can provide them. There is a volunteer opportunity to help staff this clinic. And they certainly are desperate to find certified nurses that can give shots. And that doesn't mean you're a certified nurse in a hospital. Just the certification is required to actually administer the vaccine. So if you have a desire to volunteer and you're not a nurse, there are positions to help log people in, do the paperwork, that type of effort. But it's a Herculean effort that they've put forward in a very short period of time. And I know they began last Friday and caught up, I believe, our fire and police departments. Phase one again is for hospital and medical personnel and those first responders that must go into situations where COVID exists. So it seems quite natural to me that they need to be the ones to get it first. And then you can look at the schedule that DEHEC and the state has determined for phase one B and, and further. So just wanted to give thanks to the efforts of everyone involved in that project. And I'm grateful to be included and get that information on our website as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I've noticed on our Facebook, I mean, on our town page, we do have a link for the COVID vaccination on our website. So if somebody needs more information, it is definitely right there.
Thanks to Chris Sardelli for posting that.
Yeah. And as part of what Mayor had spoken, RFATs. Davey, I would like to ask that we continue to try to find a place on our website for information regarding infrastructure. I realize we don't build the roads, but I do think there is valuable information. If we can provide some type of a link to the Pennies page so that people have an easy access to that information, I think it would be very helpful for the community.
We'll look for that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it's time to get our week on, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Larry. Second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much for your time and effort this morning. Look forward to all of us having a good week.